Progress.
Plan for two. That explains.
Special session. You guys are all ready. Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to tour Gary, Kaylee's family, so.
This will be this is important you need to have now, but I will explain it, but it's an actual like one of the days. And then some, that's something down. We want to, you guys are ready in a couple of days. If you want to get five months in, we say. Right, that time. Yeah, okay. But that way we can just hook that around and you guys take as long as you want for your discussion.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Oh. I think, right? My call is, uh, we're gonna start with a special session. I'm gonna call a special session in order. Um, it is six twenty-three. Um, so we have a couple of additions to the agenda. I guess we don't need to approve agendas and all that stuff because we're not voting on some of them.
No.
So, um, the first thing we wanted to start with is, uh, the executive session. Now do we have to go in? Cause it's listed as an executive session.
I don't.
But it doesn't need to be an executive session, right?
No.
Okay.
No, neither one of these that I suggest are executive session now.
Okay, and that's what I was, I tried to clarify with Janet earlier today because I was confused why it was sort of executive session. So, okay, so just straight in business. Uh, we have two items of new business. Um, one is, oh, and then we have the copies, sorry.
Yep.
Yep.
One for you guys.
And then email you.
And this one.
Yeah.
I just have one copy of it.
Oh, okay.
Because this one needs me sign.
All right, I'll just explain it.
Yep.
Is that fine? Okay.
Yep.
And so the first item is a roofing. Uh, Barry, of course, we've asked him to figure out this whole roofing. Um, Ben, and some of you had some great ideas before the meeting. Over accounts and other things, appreciate all those great ideas, but Barry actually has some good hard facts. And so, um, this is something that there's a little bit of a time concern to it. Barry's gonna explain that. And we'll just let you go through this because we don't have time to read it.
Yeah.
But, um, what Gail kind of mentioned is because this is, who is not on a public, um, agenda. We can't vote on this tonight, however, because of the time sensitivity of it. Uh, we may do a Zoom meeting here in a week or so, uh, just so that we don't hold it up if that's the course that you all wanna vote, um, with this. So with that, I'm gonna turn over to Barry and you can explain this forty pages of fun.
Okay, uh, I'll make it as short and quick as possible. So Serta is a envelope consultant, which apparently is like an engineer. Uh, they just specialize in everything outside, like they specialize in roof. Um, window siding, that kind of stuff to make sure you have the water coming in. And Chris McKay has showed Serta as the company he would like to be our, uh, envelope consultant. Um, if you skip through your package, you don't even have to. It comes as total thirty-two thousand three hundred dollars. Um, I had a couple of questions for Chris. I'm not sure if you guys have that heat going there or not. But he answered them and one of the questions was, um, is that part of what was quoted, that million that he quoted? He said, yeah, it falls under design. Um, the other part I'd asked him is if, uh, Serta was the only company contacted and he said, yes. Uh, the reason being, he felt there are only a couple of other reputable companies out there. And one of them charges double what Serta would charge. And the other ones changed ownership, apparently has had several issues since changing ownership. So he felt like Serta was on that thought. Um, he said, definitely thought, would you reach out to the other one? If it was something he wanted to, but his experience with them is there's twice as much money as Serta.
And because Barry, can I interrupt?
For, yeah, I'm sure for his.
Well, because he doesn't have to seek another bid because it's under the hundred thousand dollar, right? So we're okay, if you're okay from then forward with this and based on, um, HMK's recommendation, then we're okay to do that without seeking through this because of the dollar.
Yeah.
Correct, that's why we can do what goes.
Yep.
But this company is just for the design.
That's, yes, uh, they're envelope consultants, Scott, and apparently they're like architects, but they specialize in the buying stuff.
Why don't we need an architect just put a new channel on?
Uh, apparently it's low working, everything has to be engineered. They want to look at it like an engineer of practice is what AM world consult. That we found that out just some random building we're doing is because of all the seismic activity and all of these. You can't do anything to a building without having.
This fifteen or eighteen year ago, because the last time it seems like it was just a.
It's a plan down.
Yeah.
Changing, yeah.
Engineers, because there's four, five.
It's like really heavy for the paint.
Yeah, and that was the concern was how many later singles do we have? And I know when we were there with the last guy, uh, he pointed out our events were done correctly. How all of our AC units and whatnot are mounted, they're not mounted correctly. And my understanding, this is the, this isn't one of the reasons to hire an envelope involved to, to find all these issues. So what they need for, what they can avoid that.
Yeah, so what do you mean from us?
We need you to look it over. Make sure you're okay. I, there's a lot of technical language you may or may not choose to read all of it. The information from HMK is there as well. Um, notice that I already signed the agreement on one page, but I haven't submitted anything yet. And if you don't want to do it, we won't. And, and I'll probably change the date on that anyway. We just kind of got very good again, but wait, we're doing this wrong way. Um, but we need you to look it over and as soon as you can, like within a week or so, if we could just even have five minutes of meeting and say thumbs up to this one, thumbs down. So that he can move ahead one way or the other and slow us up on this roofing project. The, um. Uh, to say, because we, he needs to know, and this is part of the quite overall learning cost. There's thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
It's in there, so it's not.
It's all under design.
Yeah, all is under design. So we're gonna pay it one way or the other with somebody. This is just who this, um, HMK Chris recommends that he use. So we just want to make sure because there is still thirty-two thousand bucks that we need to guys approval on that. We have to have that before we move ahead. So that's where we are. Don't read it over and when you wanna schedule a meeting to officially vote on that and approve this bid. Um, we'll do that and then Barry can either move ahead or you can have, direct him, find somebody else if you don't want to work in that bid.
And technically, this would come out of this year's budget rather than next year where, where the rest of, or the majority of the one, uh, budget for it. That'd be the only difference. This, this is something he asked for us to be able to pay for this year out of this year's budget. So we can get going and just get as you can mind and start moving forward with it.
You forgive me, but have we talked about a million dollars? Um, budget item, but we're gonna put that in the budget.
That's for next year.
Upcoming budget.
Yeah, upcoming budget, so that as soon as it will be spent out of next year's budget, so as soon as like, if we can have this roof then anytime after July one. This is gonna be. But a couple of these expenses that we can move ahead, like, like the HMK and this one, that's coming out as a years, so we can roll.
Yeah, and we approved that.
Yes.
Oh.
You just, you just haven't approved the amount for this guy, this Serta.
Yeah, I was just making sure. We've got that million dollar. Things that we're about before we start.
We haven't, well, we haven't approved that.
That's just what we think it's going to be.
That would be.
Yeah, and so.
Because they have, the reason why we have it is because when we get to that point, when we get this preliminary work done, then they'll have to go out on the bid. And we'll have to get, because the amount then will, yeah, then we'll have to approve.
A million is just an estimate of it.
Yeah, that's just an estimate based on what the HMK, that said.
Yes, yeah. I Redman just did a roof really similar to ours for right around there.
Yeah.
So, but that was awesome.
Yeah. So it might be less than that, right around, but just using that figure as a figure of account. But when we get to that point, yes, that's what these guys will do as well. And that's why this, um, Serta guy is, he's trying to get the information about what we need done with. What all has to be done up there.
Yep, essentially the, the engineering. He like an architect is the way.
Yeah. Right. But more specialized in envelope.
In roof.
In what?
The exterior of the building.
Good. Any other questions? Yeah, it's just, I don't know, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah.
The reference going with it, too. Well, but at least this firm's gonna back up their work.
Yeah, but then, I mean, they were. Yeah. The thirty thousand dollar insurance policy.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
For how many years?
Right.
More if he wants. It'll give you a warranty.
Yeah, depends on the product, I suppose, that you use.
Yeah. We had a thirty, or two, ten minutes. Have you heard of the entire new gym?
Oh.
I don't know.
I feel like certain number for childrens.
Yeah. Hey, well, look that over. And you can stay on me to remind me in case I forget on getting that new meeting.
Will do.
In a timely fashion, please.
Thanks.
Barry, how, how big was that roof again? Was it like six hundred square or something like that?
I don't remember what. Uh, I wanna say like the, the Redman roof, right, or everything.
No, it was.
You know, I think it's like fifty-five thousand square feet.
That's a gym and all the reasonable.
Yeah, so it'd be basically as I think that wasn't done, maybe the, uh, I give it. Cause he can hold you and.
Okay.
Okay. So yes, we'll be scheduling a meeting soon, uh, but that gives you a chance, look over the information. See their description. They do give a, do a description of what services they provide, what they're gonna do for us. And if you have any questions, probably talk to Barry.
Yeah, let me know and if, yeah, if I can't answer them, I'll get ahold of Chris and he can answer them. And if it's easier for you guys, he's even offered to, uh, zoom in on the meeting. And get a, be gay and.
I'm sure especially if you get closer, it's bigger bill. We can talk to him.
Yes, and if, if I read the con, part of the contract, right, so we weekly, once they get going, it'll be weekly meetings, contracts, and all of it, like, there's something on the cost. Uh, it doesn't sound like it'd be much different than when they did it. It'd be that same process.
We get a discount for less meetings?
Probably be my target for us than I know those.
Okay. Um, this, you have a question?
Yeah, Dwight, that fifty-five thousand square feet, that's, doesn't seem that high. I don't know, it's more work, road cost.
I mean, cost of materials are fifty thousand.
There's a lot of.
They have eighteen dollars.
But what are you starting on with?
Fifty thousand dollars.
How many do you think, like, you know?
It's also.
Yeah. I don't know if you want that out.
Um, and it is.
Public on the Zoom channel.
Also.
Okay, let's do it.
But yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah. Right. You know. Okay, the second new business side.
Okay, well, so we are gonna do that in a second.
Oh, we are.
Before you say anything on the, yeah, just because it's on Zoom and anybody can. Yeah. Yeah.
So. That is the only other item on that new business. So we're going to adjourn our special session at six thirty-four.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll be going into executive session. We'll have to clear you a gallon.
Thanks, Barry. Thanks, Barry.
Hey, you're welcome.
You have any other one?
Restarting.
Recording in progress.
Reopen, let's see. Special session, I'm gonna reopen, so we'll go right into our work session.
Are we gonna, I mean, we need to put.
Oh, yeah, no, I knew there was something, the way we need to stay in special session, so.
Oh, no, you, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get about where we go.
We're going back in the special session, as we started at six forty-four. So Scott is here.
I followed elementary hallway, I didn't go all the way down, but. It says we're back. The man anonymous.
Yeah, special session is back. In session, and we have one item of business, that is to vote on the personnel matters. So, um.
Let me just.
Motion like.
To, to approve.
Say the name or do we?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I move that we approve the, um, leave of absence without pay requested by Marlene Janson for the.
No, I don't.
memorandum.
Right, they're second, all second. Right? Properly moving second, all those favors say it.
I know.
All those photos, same sign, one extensions.
Great, thank you, Grandad, and.
That's it.
Yes, I will get one of you to sign tonight before you go looking at the case.
All right.
Who was the second in that?
I'm going white.
Do it, do it.
We're gonna close the special session at six forty-five. We're moving right to the seconds. Good. We're gonna have to open our work session. Six forty-five and a half. Yeah. Uh. Yes. Okay. So, so this work session is primarily to, to go over goals for the board specifically. Now, we've been talking about it for a while and you guys talked about it when I was absent here at the last meeting. Um, what I gave you there is just what I kind of presented that two meetings ago or something like that, just threw out some ideas and. Um, nobody shot me over it, so I flushed them out a little bit more, just so we had a jumping off point. Nothing, they're obviously in stone, just kind of some ideas to kind of get stuff that you thought about. Didn't put anything about, um, you know, some other intangible things like district leadership or that kind of, I don't know. Where to go with it, but anyway, there is, um, uh, the other item that we kind of talked about two meetings ago. I think it came up again last meeting was, uh, committees. And so I did list the new niece out, it's in the back. It would say. One of my thoughts there was just having, you know, each board member serve on committee. And then, you know, we have the, I had one, I've covered, um, and we talked about interviewing. Yeah, and whatnot, it'd be nice to have a board member on that sort of thing. So, um, just kind of listed out some of this non-exhaustive list for sure, but, um, just, just some ideas with that. Just a way to delegate some of the responsibilities of the board, keep everybody engaged to put going on day-to-day stuff and. Have some responsibilities, so, um, that's, that was my contribution. So, Ben, that's the work session. I want, I think you can do, kind of, you know, discuss this, you wanna go through that? Line by line, if you got a better idea or better approach. Throw that out there.
I think these are all good ideas. The only thing that they don't do, because there are more activities for us to do for our. Um. Own application, I guess, um, they don't do much to help guide, uh, Gail in her. Which is kind of some of the headphones for us, so. I think they're good ideas, like the things that we can certainly implement, but I still think there's work to do beyond that to, for us to. Figure out some sort of guiding. Document for admin.
Vision, video, yes, yeah, no, that's why I got two blank lines on the back. And then I had to get to that leadership component of that video and focus. Um, about researching, maybe some other school districts and stuff. You know, when, when, when we think about our role, really, we're responsible for Gail. Overseeing Gail, nothing else, and so it gets kind of muddy on, you know, um, how much leadership we can, we can provide there, but. Uh, definitely, I think that's the big gap that I was struggling.
Some of that they surface through ratings and some of those other things that they. Um. Bring that to the clearer by, we just. So should we start, go through one by one and answer?
Sure. You want? Want me to, leader, you wanna lead it, rest in.
Uh. Here. Okay, all right, board hosts or sponsors, uh, some sort of appreciations for staff twice a year. There's a dinner already, we're not really part of that. I think we're invited, but we're certainly not hosting or sponsoring yet. So. For that, we could either. Get more involved with that in some way, so that could potentially qualify. Or we can come with two apparently separate events. I don't know, I haven't participated in a staff dinner yet.
We did the Christmas one. The Opal Sage or something, but. Didn't do a, didn't do last year, but. You know, that's one, and then you guys do an appreciation day or something like, I mean, it's that appreciation day in the spring, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, teacher appreciation.
You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be involvement, maybe it's some kind of a token to the staff, it'll be intended or something.
Just, we try to get involved in those. Uh, events somehow or another.
Yeah.
Rather than create, because also if you've got those and then you try to create two, you know, some additional things.
Yeah, too much, yeah, no, that's just too much.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to add to.
Not too much appreciation.
Yeah.
There's too many, too many events.
But just, but what you're talking about, just piggybacking with what we already have going on.
I think so, because if we start trying to do too much else, I think you get to a point where you dilute, you're pretty soon, you're doing something quarterly and you dilute, um, participation of. That's what we've found it, my work anyways, we try to do, we've gone from like monthly events where you start getting nobody showing up because it's. Just you're asking a lot of people. And then we did just like biannual and that was maybe not quite enough, so we've kind of gone to a quarterly, but even that's, people have missed lives.
They do, and we have people that, that, um, travel, you know, from here. So staying on an evening is, is, uh, difficult for them sometimes. The other thing too, as you all know, is quite a few of our staff are coaching or doing at the fair or other things that tick them out beyond the school day. So I think your idea of, um, tag teaming with what we already have going on should be fine. And in fact, um. I don't think anyone would complain, I'll ask Janet and Cameron, but I don't think anyone would complain if on one of those couple of. Staff appreciation or dinners that we do like Christmas or whatever, if you just kind of wanted to all show up and. Lead it more, you know, kind of take it over or say, hey, this is, you're now kind of in charge of this, or you wanna all. Make a show, maybe you could get up and say something, whatever you wanted to do, you could take more of a leadership role in even.
Yeah.
Those existing events, I would be fine with that. We just do it. Usually just ends up being us doing it for everybody else because we want them to know.
Ends up being an administration.
Yeah.
Appreciation. I mean, I've been part of a few of them. I, I think it's a good, good evening.
It is a good evening, yeah, and we enjoy it, but we're the ones that are.
Right, you guys.
Yeah.
A low key option, it's in last, what, two, three years when we've done the lawn chair lunch.
Right.
Kind of, uh.
And that inserts back to school.
Be low key, we do somewhat of a potluck, we bring it on lunch and just kind of depending on weather, generally just go out and kind of hang out. That might be an option too.
Maybe it's barbecue, coming like barbecue for.
Barbecue or serve, I mean.
Serve.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
That would be.
Kind of what I'm doing. You know, if we can do that kind of stuff where we're more visible or more, you know, take some pressure off of you guys some way. I know when I went to the Opal Sage when I was coaching, and so I stopped on my way back and I was late, so I don't know what happened when I got there, but. You know, it was pretty quiet and everybody was kind of at their tables just doing their own thing. It's like, man, it'd be nice if the board could like give them, uh, you know, Dutch brothers, which you don't have, but something, you know, like that was the. On something that they can do Amazon car or something, and we don't, we don't have a budget for that. So that's why I put that projected cost column, just thinking, well, what could we do? I mean, last year's staff Christmas thing, I think the, the teachers had to pay for it. For themselves, can we just figure out how to pay for it? You know, then the board.
Yeah, we appreciate you so much, we'd like you to pay for your dinners.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, because we're not allowed to.
No, we're not allowed to, yeah.
And the, the year before that, that, when we got the, um, recruitment and retention grant, that's when, when we were able to buy them the dinner in the fall. And the dinner is spring, we bought Christmas and dinner was spring for them. And it was so fun. They appreciated that so much and we were able to give them a financial bonus both times. And that was because that's what that grant was for. That's the only time we've been able to do that, because we're not able.
By the best, can we leverage some people that help?
Yeah.
Or even the LCSN perhaps?
Yeah.
I think they've got money in the motion, that's enough.
They could, yeah.
Dedicate for anything and get them.
Need to go out there and have a request, say this, well, yeah.
And the Cameron's idea of the lawn chair lunch, that's cool because you would get a chance to meet our new staff at that time. They get a chance.
Oh, yeah.
Know who they're talking about. This year we had, um, Ryan Tag here do that with us because we did CP IDA that day, didn't we? Actually, I had one of our presenters eat with us and all that. But, um, that would be a good time to meet with the staff that we know.
It's only nice. And I guess I'm not to know.
Yeah, but you've always invited us to the.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I've never been there. Probably will.
If I'm done with this, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a tough.
Yeah, it is, it's a tough one.
Or even like saying that, you know, donate meat or something and.
Yeah.
We can cut it up or whatever. Months off.
Yeah. So, that's kind of a, I give you a note, I'm just not creating anything, so.
Yeah.
The way I clarified that, all right, that's good.
So an easy, like, quick thing would be finding a way to pay for the, like, holiday party type deal, I think so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I mentioned to Scott a ton, we do it at the dinner tree, if we just find somebody that would help factor the cost of it and just do it.
It's a whole lot easier to go someplace and let them do it than us to do it.
Mm-huh.
Sometimes we have to, because there's just nowhere to, place to go, but it's nice to go out, we can go out and.
Yeah, there is no place to go.
No.
So.
On the, pay for the holiday party and pay for, like, if we did everything, paying for the staff only here plus ones or what's, just depends on what, how many we can get.
Yeah, I guess. It's fifty bucks a crab, so.
I mean, my, my opinion, if you don't, if you don't have them invite their spouse, then they're gonna come.
That's, never would come.
Yeah. That's kind of how I am today.
Hundred bucks a pair, so where we got forty.
Yeah.
Forty steps.
That's, that's probably.
Everybody plus stars if you're pushing forty-five.
Yeah.
Quite higher.
Kind of participation do you, did you get when we paid for it?
More than if they have to.
That's what fifty percent maybe.
Yes, but they have to pay for it, it's about fifty percent, even if it's a twenty, twenty-five dollar meal, and we keep this.
Stage was full, that time, that that was paid for.
Yeah.
Two years.
Still, yeah. One fifty, sixty percent.
Then. Still has spouses, it's, yeah, so, we've got about three thousand deaths.
Well, that's just.
I'm also really excited and then you might have. At the forty-five one. The day. Hmm. I'm not saying I have to go there, but I don't know where to go, it's, I mean.
Yeah. It's down to the water hall.
Lodge.
The lodge, he has a water hall, can't even fit forty-five people.
Yeah.
Well, there's a, Opal Sage has got a new spot to place there, right?
Yes and no.
No.
Not sure, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Most white, most good, everybody.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a happy time, as people are excited about.
What about like, would Lapine be too far, like Cinco or something like that? Is that? I don't know, I guess somebody has a staff travel from that direction.
Yeah. Are you, are you having catered?
What, what the place did you say?
Second one.
I travel.
I mean, you recently did it here, that had, was it shining in theaters?
Yeah.
Means we've done that soon.
Yeah. Because we didn't, there wasn't any other option at the time.
Yeah.
There wasn't. And the whole that being people.
Yeah.
If we have a caterer, I mean, there's. If we're related to transportation, there's several places in bed that you can.
Oh, sure.
They wouldn't bring it out here, but they'll fix everything for you. We've done a few, even live parties. Slash my sister's birthday. Cause it was like. I want to talk to her space.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I, before we go much further, how solid do you want to make? This document or whatever we produce, or we just kind of going through.
That new association period right now and thinking about it and then.
And finalize it in another month or so.
But I put paper holiday party projected cost four thousand on the higher side probably.
Yeah.
All right.
Fair enough.
Are we good with that one though?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
As our starting point. Yeah. Now, the next question before we move, are we going to try to get that done this year?
That's basic.
That's pretty quick.
Right, do you guys have something already in the works?
No, no, not yet. Yeah.
Rams.
Yeah, we usually do that, usually after Veterans Day, whatever, we come back.
When you usually do that? You know, the date timeline.
We do it before we.
Just before we leave for Thanksgiving.
Break, usually that last week. Christmas break, yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, you mean what time do we do the party? Yeah, it's usually that last, sometimes that last week.
And we try to schedule it as soon.
It's the twenty fourth this year.
Yeah.
This one would.
Twenty seven. Twenty, yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you, because it's nineteen.
So the eighteenth day will be our last Tuesday.
I'll bring, I'll be in quiet and spring all over there.
And usual, and usually you want to go a day before that because on Thursday they all want out of here.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be on Thursday, it either have to be maybe like on.
Two year Wednesday.
Two year Wednesday, December sixteenth or seventeenth, that week.
Yeah.
How many teachers take time off? Like. Do you have more people that try to leave early a couple days or that are late coming back, or is it not really an issue?
It's not that big, I mean, you get. A handful every year, but I mean, it's not a huge issue.
We started doing our holiday party. In January, just because people are less busy, lives have calmed down, it seems like, and.
Yeah.
We get better participation, and we plan to be or in there.
You know, and maybe, and maybe there's less pressure for people to do gifts. Cause I, I do think sometimes they. Don't. Want to go if we're signing up people to. Bring, bring a pair of socks or, you know, or whatever, and maybe that'll just take some of that pressure.
Well, and if we wanted to do it when we returned, our back to school day is Monday, January fifth. Um, we could just call it a, it doesn't have to be a, you know, Christmas or holiday party. Um, we could just call it a back to school. A welcome back or, you know, whatever we want to do and put it in the new year.
I don't know, yeah, I, I think.
Done it that way forever, just maybe we do it that way. Might be kind of nice, because then the holidays are all done, you weren't quite as frazzled and. All of that, so. That might be a good thing, something to think about.
So. January fifth. I was even thinking, we're gonna like December eleventh, so you're.
Oh. We're back on.
So things aren't so busy down that stretch. Sometime in there, I think.
Let me look at this.
Basketball and start and all that stuff, so we have to let their calendars. Monday, a good day, but something like dinner treatment. You wouldn't be able to do, you know, I hope on Friday, Saturday, so.
Unless they would open up special for us, we're going to take the whole building anyway.
I think I, they've done that just.
It's like December, January that they're completely closed.
I don't know.
A couple months in there, whether.
No, it's not completely closed, it's just like.
Send us about three days a week. Or two days a week.
Friday, Saturday, I think. Instead of. Let's see, Friday, Saturday, so.
What is scheduled?
Yeah, that's, I'm looking for it, by the way. So we can, we can play with that a little bit, um. Somebody want to kind of take a lead on that? Not ready to go down there, I guess.
Oh, yeah, we don't have any schedule.
It might be nice to have a date in mind before we start calling, and say, hey, would you be willing to do?
Yeah.
Or at least a month.
Yes.
Maybe first month or after Christmas.
Yeah.
And then same way, we got spend. Maybe.
I think.
Taco Bill.
Daisy is the treasurer at L C S I, right?
Yeah.
I could talk to her.
Okay.
Well, cause the other thing I'm thinking, if you, if you are considering dinner treat, but they already, because they make reservations so far out.
Yeah.
They already have, they probably already have.
That would be the advantage, the advantage if they're going to open up special for us.
Yeah.
If we, because we would take up their entire building anyways.
Yeah.
So, okay. Let's per dog at night, see where we go from there. You know? Good.
Not to. Go. Or we're around too much, but, uh. On the, um, speaking at L C S N. And things we're involved in, should we have a board member involved in that group so that. We have an idea of what's available to us through them. Didn't we use them, I wasn't here for the building project, but didn't we, you know, maybe the track project, do we use them quite a bit for the track?
That was the foundation.
You know.
Then you guys do have a board member touch on the foundation.
The school supplies and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure I thought it was kind of some dinner.
I think they bought some. Questions and stuff for some teams last year. And while I'm in state, because they. They do that. Are they the ones, or is it the foundation, which one of those?
At L C S.
Was back there.
Dinner and auction.
Yes.
Yeah. No, I know, uh, Marley doesn't allow work with that group, then. He said that would be something.
No, that, that group might be somebody that just put on it. Christmas dinner.
Yeah.
Jan, or a January day. I mean, they, they got the buildings to do that.
Yeah, well, do they do the F C things with?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And they also put on fire spreads for our certified appreciation, we get a, so you know. When you say that, that kind of, they do, they bring food in here and they do a little bit of something every day, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You say more leans on?
I mean, Stacy.
So, I don't know.
Marley, Stacy, I think married. By a coconut J C.
Yeah.
That. I don't think who else.
So Anthony.
Small group really.
Yeah.
Pretty small group, but they do a lot of good things.
Yeah. The viewer saying, you should, number seven is where you're at.
Wait, I was. Thing I didn't want to jump around, it is, I was gonna add. You know, C S N, maybe we should have somebody that's. A liaison with. Any group that's in the community that's interested in all of the school and fundraising and things, we should probably have somebody on the board that's familiar with what they're working on.
Not that you have to be at all meetings, but at least feeling.
Yeah, just. Have some sort of. That way, as things come up in a meeting, we, we've got somebody that knows.
Yeah.
What resources we have. Uh, professional developer. Annually minimum, what I feel the each board member participates in one activity. Could be conference or webinar, uh, and report back to the board during the monthly meeting. So. Minimum of one activity per member annually.
Yeah.
That's probably if they're asked. There are a lot of webinars out there, there's. That dinner in Paisley would probably qualify as one.
Thursday.
Thursday, if this is.
Thursday.
Yeah, and there's a board training before ten to five. I don't know if they've ever done that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they, yeah, I, I think, you know what, is this because of the.
Mandatory.
The mandatory thing, and so they're offering.
Yeah.
They're offering the.
They've never done that before, it's always. Six and training at. Six thirty, but now that.
Training at five and.
Starts at five.
Yeah.
You get that mandatory meeting that way. We could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We was all the others that Thursday. I can't.
Well, I have. We have. Fifty four reservations. Cameron Gale, Scott, and then we made an extra just on the off chance that somebody else wanted to make it.
That's why.
I'm starting to.
Five o'clock in Paisley, I mean. Fire it over there.
Let's do something with the grain.
It's.
Grand. Weeks.
The grants tomorrow.
Don't be a little great.
Right up.
Good.
Um, well, some of we don't have somebody for that yet to go.
This guy.
Scott's going.
But there is one more reservation being made, we're still.
Were you going to the board training as well, or just for the dinner portion? Or is it? Uh, well, we'll probably give it a shot, I think it's like five. Long as we don't have late trip.
You know, when we also get that.
By Thursday, I might, he should be back. Hopefully.
Yeah.
Must be here tomorrow, I see.
So that's Thursday, and Scott and I are going next week, the next week.
Yeah.
Two weeks, next week, that's what, due to Portland. One, so it's the. P, uh, P R I conference on. Wednesday. And then O S B A starts on Thursday, and we're gonna pick in some of that. Thursday, so.
So what you're saying is you guys are covering a win to do something. Right?
No.
So I, I think you can use my spot for Thursday or Tuesday.
Cause this isn't. Formalized during anything, that's telling what we're. What's going on. Uh, but that's the kind of activities I'm kind of thinking of, if you can get to the F O S P A. They really want to go on Friday, because they have this rural caucus meeting, and I'd like to learn more about that. And, uh, then our lawyers are hosting a reception. Uh, our lawyers firm offer most of the reception that evening, so it'd be nice to meet all the people. Supposed to be working for us, uh, as well, but I can. Right, so. Um. But we're gonna. Gonna catch at least part of it, and then. You know, as you go on F O S P A's website, there's a ton of webinars, not just the ones that's required, but a lot of, you know, just a little snippet ones that. You know, talk to you about what not to say in English, probably should.
Wash your face to work, yeah.
So. Okay. Uh. Wouldn't take too much to do that, and then if you just came back out of meetings, you know. But at the end of the meeting. The other business or something, just say, hey, by the way, if I listen to this webinar, it's not worth your time, or I got these, these three good soul nuggets out of it. And then. That would be professional development for everybody, right?
Yep. Load of medium costs and what, I mean, like O S B A is such a little higher cost, but webinar, you're free.
Yeah, and so we did have two thousand dollars in the budget, right?
Yeah.
Is what we've determined. Uh. And so like that P R I's conference, they pay for a hotel and our registration to, so there's no cost for, as you travel, which. And then the next night, and, uh, I've got. Trail.
Did you guys get signed up for it then? You just.
No, I'm just gonna do that morning.
But. I mean, the O S B A, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need? Me to sign you up or?
Yeah.
Or anything?
I was the friend to the last night. Rocking the way world, but.
I mean, if you want me to register, you just send me an email for like what specific night or day or whatever, and I'll.
Yeah.
I'll get on and.
I got this for Scott, so I was gonna let him go through it.
Like, I can get on the school credit card, get that. Done.
Yeah. We have, you know, calories.
I think we've checked Mark out, though, that's an easy one that, uh, each of us needs to. Attend one event or do some sort of webinar, come in the meeting and say.
Yeah.
Give a report, X, Y, Z. Right, right, we get on that. Um. Community engagement, each board member participates in an activity, rough school, district, to our, the school district. Global community and or represent our school board and district in official capacity at a community event. Um.
Who's all over here and shaft around the water for them. And I can take two more of prom.
There you go.
You know what I think would be real fun, I think. It's too late for this this year, this just popped into my head, but I think next year when you do homecoming, I think it'd be fun for you guys to have a. What, or like to ride in the back for pickup and. Distinguish yourself as, you know, school board that it shows that you support, because it really, right now, it's the. Volleyball players, football players, us.
Teachers.
Teachers, the men and.
Yeah, the common of the first year I hadn't been in it.
That option would be just like presenting the court.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, something like that.
It's easy, most of it there, a lot of you are at the game anyways.
Right.
Just. Remember sending our court this year.
Yeah. It's just an easy thing to do. You know, and also if you're around anyway.
Yeah.
And for the game.
Yeah.
Just talk.
We do like, Neil, what does that mean? One o'clock this morning, so. Right on the top of it, and, and that's the specifics. Specifics that we need to figure out, you know.
Don't think of homecoming, something, and maybe some. Just different events.
We were visible throughout the years, um.
We gotta be careful.
They're even not necessarily. Town Hall.
When I try to embarrass Scott and make him come up and help me present medals and stuff, that. Night of excellence.
Like. Kind of, kind of like town hall, Q and A type things, where only two of you go at a time, so it's not a. Board meeting.
Yeah.
Um. Here, I was talking to um. Laura a while back, she said they used to do something that was kind of like that, where it was two more members, that was mainly for the, it was mainly for the staff, or just like more becoming. During the school day and trying to get staff in to say, Joe. What are you guys liking, what are you not liking, kind of thing, instead of being like. Not that, I mean, I know that Gales are only employees technically, but. It's helpful for us to know a little bit about, let's give one of my yes, perhaps some ideas, and she said that it was good because it wasn't like a. I think staff can be intimidated sometimes by. Like official board meeting and coming and speaking in one, but when it's more just like two members in a Q and A. Little less formal. Did kind of a luncheon one year that way, like there were young service people there, and then the next year it kind of evolved and. Wasn't a success. Got you.
That would say.
That's not community engagement, that's staff engagement.
Which also the dinner you're hosting, that will. Let staff visit the wedding too, that's pretty good.
Because I, I do, I give, I mean, there's community members that have no idea who we are, and there's community members that don't, schools, but, um. There's tons of staff up here that. I wouldn't know that they were teacher very much time in. Chevron. Thank Claire. But. So it's, I think it's too full. Because most of my times up here at sporting events, and unfortunately, it seems, although maybe I don't know, because I don't recognize them, it seems like we don't have great staff participation at our sporting events.
Yeah.
Like we had a district volleyball tournament here last. Friday. And. Outside of admin. Actually, the whole, the whole office staff is pretty good about being. But outside of you guys, were there any of the teachers up here for that game?
Laura.
Terry Brown, Laura and Kerry.
At least. Um. Laura's got a dark name, that's not. Yeah. Laura's an African.
She's at every time.
Can't remember what, who was.
Versus it. Football. Hannah usually does lines.
Yeah.
In volleyball.
Does lines a lot.
And usually there's a couple, like, either Roxanne or Shayla.
Roxanne, Erica, Sheila.
Yes, we've got more of them. Not, not a ton though.
Oh, no, for a while, I guess.
No.
No, not in overwhelming amount, and part of that is, is because we do have people that drive. Like, and just don't stay, or have kids or whatever. Um, the other part is, I agree, I think.
Stumbles across country.
With that.
Yeah, stumbles across country.
Right.
A lot of the time, Chris has gone to football.
Very true.
Or vice, yeah, or vice versa, I mean.
You start whittling away at these doing other things, that takes a pretty good chunk out of it. But you are correct, I do think there are others that live close by that, that it should come.
I, I would expect this Wednesday, there'll be a better turnout, because it's weekday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not in the middle of, not three o'clock on Friday.
Yeah.
That's a tough.
Yeah. And that's when, that's the trouble of, uh, yeah, when you do something on Friday or Saturday, they're kind of home. Um, I think if they're, if they're traveling or they have kids, um.
Although on Wednesday, staff has to pay.
They do.
And normally, yeah, normally they get.
Yeah. And it's like ten bucks or something, last time, last week it was five. I think I paid five last night, and I was like, ten this time, so. They start, and we have.
But you.
Yeah, we have people that don't want. Because they have kids and they don't play, and it's, I feel some of ours, especially the outside staff, they just.
Actually, I was gonna say, it's a fire's doing concessions, so there's another teacher.
That's right.
She will have to pay the.
No.
Ball, and that was a rabbit hole, I guess, because it was about us.
Sack of pisses about us.
Well, but you're talking about boosting enrollment so that, or, you know, the attendance of these things, and those, these are all. Reasons why we don't.
Maybe we're more present that. In a way that's. Present as a board, as opposed to just a community member.
And one of my thoughts that I probably didn't capture real well on that, is how can we be more. Um, promoting the school within our groups, you know, and, you know. With the behavior association, I, I brought, I folded in mid-state into that, I mean, the connection, right, with power rates and all that stuff, that's, they have us caught on that agenda, so. As a board member of mid-state, I wanna try to promote mid-state within these other groups rather than just ourselves, possibly. And so, you know, maybe it's. Yeah. I don't know, whatever the groups we have anymore.
I guess that kind of fall into your committees too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because if you're representing Northlake at the caucus, you're, you're not our community, but, you know, you're still. Or the NLCS or the foundation, those are a direct. Yeah.
Because honestly, since I've been on the board, other than. Uh, parents that have kids in the school that need to gripe about something, I'm sure it's to those, right? I don't hear from anybody that says, you know, what. You know, what, I mean, what's going on with the school, I mean, is that. You know, and sooner or later, we're gonna go out for a bond for something that just looks like that, it's gonna happen, and to have that pre-establishment with those relationships already built. Um. Would be good, and I just don't see us, you know, you, you said it, there's a lot of people in the community that don't get engaged, or know what's going on up here, and that's, that's where we're failing. A little bit. And so, how can we promote our, our school district within our community a little better, the groups that we all are part of, serve. Now.
I would do that necessarily. We talked a while back about um. Trying to get. Like, we've got our screens up in here now. About trying to see if we could get similar screens that have a slideshow in some community facilities, like maybe one of the post office or Sinclair or. Is it show around Silver Lake or is it Sinclair, whatever, the gas station in Silver Lake, um. Some stuff is just.
Yeah.
When people are out of their normal stuff, there's something that's Northlake, that's kind of probably a face.
We looked at that, and I don't remember.
We talked about that, Dan, you might remember, we talked, and weren't there a bunch of, there was a bunch of. Kind of barriers sewn up when it came to. Using their wifi or paying for wifi, or something, when you put these uh, screens in other areas, I think that was.
Relying on. Them to actually put it up.
Provide it or else we have.
Or we have to connect to their internet.
Yes. And then we run into issues and we're.
It's viable for the screen.
Well, and, and then if we're um. If we make a mistake and put a student picture on there that wasn't supposed to have their picture in public. You know, if it's just here, it's like, oops, okay, pull that down immediately, but if it's, but if it's like everywhere else, on every screen, then we. Yeah, it, it's kind of hard to undo that. As well.
I think it's a great idea, but when it comes down to logistics.
Logistics.
Hard to pull off, we did look.
So spread out, that's what's.
Yeah.
Tough.
My thought was if you could just. Have those screens mirror your screen here, so you're not trying to change it every location, you change it one location, and then. About one or two of them wouldn't.
But logistic, yeah, that, that, that was the logistics, as far as, we don't, we don't have the infrastructure out in this area to. Do something like that.
Hmm. What about, um. Couple random thoughts, what about. Attending one or two, do you attending a. Chamber of Commerce meeting or a booster's meeting, and just kind of giving them that date, do they allow you to do that? Could you say, I'm high behind your agenda together, if you thought what's going on with the school, are they interested in that, would they allow that, I don't know. Because like I have allowed.
I know.
On an occasion or two, a couple of years ago. When I was working really strong with KCC, and we were doing some stuff with them, getting some things going, we had actually hosted a Chamber of Commerce meeting up here in a community room. And the KCC folks were here, and it was great, I mean, we just had, it was great, they just held the main event down, so they have. Here. Because we had those people. And that was a nice connection, so, I don't know, just.
Other group that I know, and who's involved with this.
Yeah.
I know.
It was, they're the cause of the Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's Chamber of Commerce, it comes out of Lakeview, but they hold a meeting like once a month up here, like James.
Chamber.
James Williams.
Yes, James Williams. Yeah, they generally help with that, the, at CV, but.
The, the, the boosters, I, I, I attended a meeting. Last.
Oh, yeah.
Because they actually didn't have it on a board. Monday, because normally it's board meeting Monday.
Are there any events that we could sponsor, like as Northlake? School board? I don't know if there'd be any benefit, like the golf tournament or. Big presence, or escape the rock, then somehow. You know. Have like a school board, we've got a really cool tent that says Northlake Cowboys on.
Mm-hmm.
Guys need like.
School board letter, I can.
Jacket, or a T-shirt, or a shirt, or, or something, that just. That you can wear to the event, so they, oh, school board member.
Yeah. They go target, that's a.
Big red target.
Red white target.
You know what, we'll let you put that, and we'll just follow you. It's great.
I can picture, I can picture the sweatshirt now, red white target, school board, position.
For some.
Position one.
That's definitely a target, that's a nasty birthmark, yeah, there too.
I know, that's why I figured.
Talk to me about your kid's disabilities.
Okay.
Maybe we come back to this one, you know, we have lots of ideas, not a lot of them. We need to, we need more.
Well, as, like I said, when the first group goes, moves topics, we're like, oh, maybe just a couple of them, so. Knock them all out, then we won't have anything next year.
That's fair.
Some of them.
The Rural Caucus uh, was the next on the list, um. We did find out they meet monthly via Zoom, right? Did he tell us what day that was?
Off website.
I find out.
He tells on our, on our last board, you weren't there. Nope. I don't make you gay, you know. Lane was texting, yeah, Lane was. Mm-hmm. And he just said, yeah, I was.
They're posted on the OSBA page.
But didn't have. Dan, was it the Friday, you said the Rural Caucus was on?
Yeah, well, I've. Well, it's, yeah, it's kind of their session, but then they also have a pre meeting for the. Members of the.
That was my room, that's right. What is, I guess, what does involvement in the OSBA mean, like, are we, are. Like an active? Like, we just. Attend meetings and. As like a guest, or were. A member?
More members.
Yeah.
So.
So you mean that you're in Portland, or? No, I mean, the, sorry, the Rural Caucus.
Yeah.
Just.
So we're not, not, we're, none of us are signed up for it, so you have to sign up for it and become a member of that group. Now, so we're, we're part of OSBA, but not this sub. But. Be nice to have, you think we'd want or two of us on there as representatives of Northlake and. Supportive of all the other rural schools too, as part of that. Uh, in terms of what they, what they do, I mean, they bring some policy ideas forward. Um. I don't know how much. They fight against other things, because there's something with OSBA, but.
Like, yeah, I think they, I think they do some.
They definitely advocate for.
Advocating.
For small schools. Uh. It'd be, like I said, I've always been curious to want to do it, just to know, you know, what is the limitations, you're still within the OSBA structure, so. You're, you've got rights against OSBA, it's probably going to be. Too vocal, so. But definitely, um. Definitely, I would, I would think there is some, some discussion about some policies at my first. You know, the populations of the, you know, maybe more from the standpoint of. We don't have the funds to do that initiative for one, to, where Portland's got fifty kids, you know, whatever, you know, I think those.
But we don't know what kind of.
We don't.
Time commitment that's gonna be here.
Well, it's not, I mean, the joint is not mandatory of the other meetings, but if you want, you guys want involved, and.
Yeah.
Information.
Just probably, it always seems like something. Take somebody on that. Seems to me. At least listening for. Couple months and see.
And I'm hoping when we go on. You know, just be on Thursday, they'll, they'll have those kind of booths and information available, they can grab. Something that gives us a little bit more insight into, other than the website's pretty. Pretty, pretty weak.
And I assume these are all. What it means. And, and listening in on that being signed up, probably.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and OSBA has their, has their fingers in everything. So you can be on that Rural Caucus, you could like, I was on a meeting with. Two hundred and thirty-seven. Other, like superintendents and other people around the state, and OSBA talked on that one, their, their. Elected school board, um. Person, he was a school board member, self-employed, he served as the chairman of the Oregon School Board Association, talking about. I think it was the Accountability Bill, sent the one forty-one, we're looking at, there's reports, and that's what I think we have. That, they're involved in all of these initiatives and bills that come out that'll pass, that mean changes for us. Because one of the big. Concerns, as you guys know, is all the unfunded mandates, they just want you to. Legislature and the governor at this time, and it's been out there for a long time. Pass this stuff, and then they just want us to pay for it right now, when we haven't even had a chance to budget for it, and that doesn't seem to really matter, well, that's probably for everybody. Small, smalls, bigs, everybody, and OSBA is always involved in that kind of stuff too, so they were on, and that gal spoke a little bit, we asked a question, I've heard, and she spoke, and so. They're kind of listening in to everything that we're doing, like COSA or. Um, everything, they're involved all over the place, because they, remember, they represent you guys, they're trying to work four districts, and they want small ones, everybody. Um, so you could probably get involved in the Rural Caucus for sure, but. It's not going to take all of you to do that, if there are other things you're interested in, because, like, do I say, you can listen and just attend their meetings, so get on their list. Don't have to hold a place on a board.
So maybe we just, so we have one person attend at least. Not, it doesn't have the same, but there's one of us attends at least. Half of their meetings. Something like that, they meet monthly, so six weeks, maybe one of us tries to attend a meeting per year.
They would find out if it's, some week, actually. It's really, it's an official school, if I get something.
Yes.
Yeah. But if it's. How's more to do it, the west side or something. Well, shouldn't.
It should have been.
Well, because two thirds, remember, two thirds of districts in the state of Oregon are considered small districts. So that's one reason why it's important. Get on there and.
Are they basically saying any single A school is a small district?
No, it goes by enrollment, I think it's like fourteen. And under, so they consider small, which still is to us, but that's small, part of the speed.
They're really comfortable, comfortable with. Each one of us to attend at least one meeting per year?
Do.
Yeah.
And I get. And their schedule, and we can just kind of give you a.
It also might work out, depending on what you start listening in on, you might decide, oh, you, Preston, I just listened to. Uh, meetings about this particular group, you know, and maybe five months, because then you'll get a. Knowledge base going, and the meeting, the meeting you attend, then you'll be able to understand what's going on, and if you just pop in now, like, once a year, that's something I'll just think of. Depends on how often they meet and how much time it is.
Right, just the fact that we have, knowing about it.
Right.
Probably, probably a problem. So.
Okay, well, for a second time, I'm gonna mark that one as checked off, each one of us sitting at a ten, one meeting per year.
Yeah.
Dan's gonna get a schedule for us when we're doing, uh. We find it as a email, or at a meeting, or text, whatever. Um. Moving on, strategic budget forecasting for capital projects. Board members or committee of two members develop a long-range forecast for capital replacement projects. This can include projected budgets for major building repair, replacement, modifications, property, life, facility updates, safety, or other major expense items not currently budgeted for any annual replacement. Maybe we started a little bit of this work with Barry's list, but maybe we need to. Have a couple of us to sit down with them outside of a meeting on a. Quarterly basis or something to get updates on. Facilities and, and try to have a better understanding, so, stuff like the, I mean, I don't know if we caught the roof, even with this committee, but.
Well, I, I see that he has the list, but we don't have the action plan of what we're gonna do, or how we're gonna do it, and how we're gonna pay, pay board. Now. But, uh, yeah, so that's, that's, I'm thinking, we need to take that the next step, and let's get some action, I guess. And look at, well, you know, we can do. Two hundred thousand dollars. A year, so how are we gonna build this out if we've got. Formulate that, like, this is the first thing that's going on. Or do we just need to lump it together, get a bond? To get it squared away.
Okay, and remember. He has, we have received from that group, champagne, that frisk, and that. Every, that was, they, we have that whole. Spreadsheet on what they found, and I almost did several pages on, so there's that, we use it as a kind of guide, I looked at it today and. Um, most of the, our building right now is in very good shape, they're mostly predicting out stuff maybe within the next three, three years and beyond, but right now, from what I can tell. Everything's in good order. You know, just a couple of small things, that's it, but nothing huge. Um.
The problem is there's small, things that seem small. Hundred and a million dollar projects.
I'm, I'm talking small in terms of money, you know, they're minor, but. Exactly, they, they still have them spread, like, when they're needed, that doesn't mean you can do them all when they're needed, but that means as far as when this needs to be done, when this is gonna show plus. Like that, but that's, that document you guys can use out of the guide, is that. Like that, but that's, that document you guys can use as a guideline.
You've got, well, we're anticipating, but outside of that, you know, those nervous. It's the floors. Showers, the locker, they just don't put. You know. So if I'm a locker, they, maybe we were getting credible and doing them up, they, but that's a bigger thing. We track that has some safety issues. Not as bad as the sender, but some safety issues. Let's say the kitchen already.
Yeah, so we need to get a water boiler situation or tank situation.
Or a fire bank.
Follow bar. So, I, you know, we, we talked about these things at board meetings, but I think to really get some action, we need a subcommittee or something like that. Where you got Barry and maybe two board members to really start fleshing stuff out specifically.
They, they can bring it to the board.
Then bring it to the board, man, instead. Here's our strategic plan for funding all this, and you have holes. In it to plug in all the other stuff that we find along the, along the way, because we're binding this up along the way, but. You know, and then what's the best course, you know, have that discussion within the board. Have that subcommittee meet again and kind of flesh out, you know, are we even gonna be able to do this in a timely fashion? Or do we just need to get? An operating law or something to kind of take care of this, and refresh everything you go. Um, and when strategically, is that a good idea? Because right now, it's probably not a good idea. So.
Or is there any? Kind of grant, well, probably, I remember, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's coming.
Yeah.
Sort of grant, but like, I said.
You keep your eye on federal funding for rural schools, that's where the rural caucus is kind of helpful, because that kind of information comes out, there's certain grant. Channels for, uh, building improvements and stuff, just rural building, rural school districts, so. Uh, just keeping our, our ear to that grindstone, knowing what's coming out, and how, how we can apply for that or be part of that.
Are you familiar with that? Have you heard about any?
Grants of that nature?
No.
And.
The only one.
Years.
The only one that I, it's, and I'm sure I have no idea how much, but there was one, um, that Wayne Stratton let me know of through. The sheriff's office, but Megan Zini, he's had a lead on one, and it was for school safety. And remember, we talked about that. Got a roof full of, with glass in here, and. Yeah, and then the, uh. The entrance, the door coming into the building down here from the shop, we kind of wanted a buzzer system, some of what we have here. Um, so I immediately suggested those, and apparently. Collectively, as a county. Wayne suggested all these things for a buck, and so I have, it's in the works, but I have no idea what, how much, when, any of that. I just said, yeah, there's money, oh, we're, these are the two projects we're looking at. It was all about safety. So wasn't anything to do with maintenance, but just safety. So we'll see where that goes. I don't know anything about it. It was kind of open, so. We'll see. That's the only thing I know that's anywhere, so now, or even available.
And who knows now, the budget, but.
Who knows?
Would have anticipated that with those, that group coming out and looking at all the buildings, that they may have been. Looking ahead to possibly offer grants, because why else would you, you go out and look, but.
Knows Department of Education or Department of Education, so, because I think like five, six years ago, they had a huge grant, that rural schools got tons of money just to. Build it just for capital improvement, maintenance. And so, you know, you're probably right, they're probably priming it up, but.
Who knows now, but.
Well, not a lot of it was seismic, like for older buildings, seismic, that was part of it, that doesn't apply to us. And the other part was the awesome grant, which is what we got to do our eight nine thing. That's, that was the four million, that's where we got that.
Yeah, that's from you.
Yeah, and I, and they still have that available last I knew. Um, but I don't know what's gonna happen with that in this.
Yeah.
Current budget, I don't know.
So that's, that's something that that community kind of, we're, um, we'll see if there's, there's money out there, grants out there, we can. Apply to this plan, once we know everything. We need to do, when we need to do it by, and, and just kind of keep the board on track with that stuff, because it just seems like that's just kind of an add-on.
We've been talking about like two years, we haven't actually taken any action, other than. We need a roof. Which was.
Which wasn't even on the list, though, yeah.
And Barry does, we talked about it, because remember, I brought this up at the beginning of the year. And so I'll have you bring it at the next meeting, and one of you guys said, well, stop, not put him under a rush, it's beginning, beginning of school, whatever. They were gonna do it in October, didn't do it, because we got going on the roof thing, but he does have a list, and if he wanted to bring it up the next meeting, he will, we can do that. And maybe we give you that, I can give you guys anytime, that copy of that, um, spreadsheet, that would have to be emailed to you probably.
I just think it's more efficient, you know, smaller amount of public meeting.
Well, then Barry doesn't even have to come with a meeting to present it.
Yeah, right, and just get it, just, just get it moving. Somebody take that leadership charge and just get it going, so we don't, not just keep adding it on at the last minute.
Well, it seems like even if we do bring in a board meeting, it's. Probably can do a lot more time, you know, like, so you get the city down, Barry, and talk about it, and ask all the questions that you want, pay as much time as you need. Get your questions answered, and then help fill those, I like that.
Call someone, see if there's a quote out there, just to give a rough idea, just get it formed.
Sounds like this is a more of a, a need and an easy way to check out the list. Do we have two? Volunteers to form staff, let's go on through the list, and come back soon.
Let's, it's all the same.
Perfect. Um, policy review, creation of many degree policies. For second consideration by a local review board.
So, this was brought up at the last, so I just have to fall together, and we kind of said, no, let's just keep going with what we do, we're. Gale reviews, the new one's coming in, but I also see values, if we can have two. Two a month at every one of our meetings that we just bring forward, and we, we, we just read it. We don't have to read it during the meeting, but just have it read prior to the meeting, it's part of the packet, and then. If something, a question comes up or some kind of discussion, it could be discussed at the board meeting, or could re-adopt it, if not. If there is something that's concerning. Um, then maybe this little review board committee can look at it and say, yeah, this doesn't reflect what we want in North Lake. And if it's really serious, we can get Elliot involved to kind of figure out what, what parameters we can mess with it or not.
So have Janet attach two policies in meeting to our board packet, we'll just read them before we come in. Nothing needs to be done, we do nothing, something needs to be done, we're just talking about.
Or we can re-adopt it, and then it's updated on that, so it's re-adopted in twenty twenty-five instead of nineteen twenty-five.
Maybe just figuring out in order that you guys want to review these in.
Yeah, yeah, no, I need to go back to the more, you know, list of some good ones, so. The one that we've just reviewed, we're gonna need to do that, so we've already got half, half.
Is there an easy way to start it, like to, to tell which ones are oldest within our?
Yeah, you.
I can probably figure out.
You guys can see where my, sorry, Chris.
Uh, just start with the oldest ones and start putting two, two a month on the board packet.
Kind of, I mean, let me go look on that policy site.
It does, two things, one, it refreshes that day, so, you know, general public looks at that and says. I mean, words never enlisted this for twenty years, this would be difficult, so it, it updates that, but it also educates us a little bit, it forces us to actually go through the things of the policies that. We, you know, we, we should probably know, or at least know of them and where to find it. And so, I, I really love that, and it's, maybe four. Uh, a month, two are new, two are approved, so it's a second, we can base it with things. And it's really just grammar, a lot of grammar stuff that, you know, date for Rome, that doesn't even exist anymore. You know, it looks stupid to have that in a policy that, that. Building is gone, mid-state, you know, so, um, it's important, I think, just to keep things.
We could do it by, like, the older dates, and then also, you know, how ours are broken up by category. A, B, C, and they're on a different topic. So you could just go there and systematically, if you wanted to do, instead of just random all over the place, you could choose however you want to do that, if you think.
I think we start with board policies.
Well, they're all board policies.
Well, but we have specific ones for just the board.
Yes, and that's that first group, I think.
Yeah.
You can, you can go through those. You know, whatever, and it's not very many policies out there, but.
Yeah.
Some of them are less this long, but take you a long time, but. However you want to do it, you could, you have your choice, what you want to do. Some of them are real, I'll say that.
Yeah.
So how many to get going, let's have a, let's start, we're gonna do two, four, three.
I need to just do two, see how it goes. We don't like it, it's a good level. Yeah.
Did we start that, uh, November meeting? If you, two with the board packet.
I have an agenda item.
The.
Just the board ones?
Just the board ones, just start with those, um.
The, the A, A V board governance ones?
Yeah, just you and I talk, and I'll take a quick look at.
Okay.
Two board policies.
Wouldn't take long to look at those, either, and see which ones are the oldest, if you wanted to, in that category.
Yeah.
Because we just did a couple of those here, not too long.
It would just take clicking into them real quick to see.
Yeah.
What those dates were.
Yeah. Only two hundred.
I tried to see if I could search by oldest.
Yeah, we do two a month, we'll get through on twelve years.
It's amazing, I've been on mid-state for five years, and we're back on some that we started, so it's just. We just, you just pick away at it. And then, of course, there's always the new ones that come along, you have to take a look, approve, and then. That really starts to short, let's see, what do you need to get to?
Okay, well, that one's, uh, that one's done. It's a common norm, that the.
Two.
Uh, the committee assignments was the next one, we've been talking about this kind of ongoing throughout the meeting already, um. Staff interviews, I think on that, we talked about it, because. We typically have somebody in staff interviews, but it's not always the same person with a new value, and have a consistent. Board member and, or at least for, maybe consistent for. Each hiring, like, or hiring each, each position, yeah, so you've got. Your interview, there's, we haven't had one, one person for each position, but if there's multiple people to interview for a position, at least the same person's interviewing them.
Yeah, that's important, but. I, I look at it, I'm just support for admin and that process, and so they're not the old voice at the table, but. Um, I know when we interviewed Aaron.
Yeah.
You were there, and I, I wanted to be there, represent more from the coaching side, and so the school board side, and I thought that was good to have. That kind of demographic at the table, but. Definitely, somebody, and, and I don't think it has to be assigned, but.
Well, those days are.
Rather than make it sometimes, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, it's kind of worked.
Maybe, maybe a point like two of you, and if one of you can come, great, but then I, then I know who to put the word out to.
The only thing I think is really important, though, is if we're, if we're interviewing for one position, or, and we're interviewing three people, then.
Same.
The same one, that's what you can't mix up, for doing like. You know, then, then next, next month, it's another person, another physician, well, then somebody new can do that.
Yeah.
You got, each person has to stick to the position.
I think with everybody's schedules, maybe we just.
Just keep it open, and I just put the word out.
Yeah.
Well, when, when you don't get an answer, then put out another, another deal out with X.
That says, no one has answered.
Just do an open call for whoever can make it, and if nobody responds, you just put the weight.
Oh, there we go.
We've already got Scott on the ag committee, but I, I like to, I think we should have, uh, are you wanting to create like a? Board governance policy around this document once it's done? Say like, this board will have at least one member on the. Ag committee, or this board will have.
I forgot too much policy already.
Yeah.
That's my foundation.
The problem with this one is, they're not our groups, so they don't want us on it. Right? So, so that, that'd be the only issue with that, is, you know, some of those are even elected.
So the idea is just best practices, we have somebody from the board involved in as many of you as possible.
Yeah.
Got it, all right.
My biggest thing is, if each one of us does a committee, then we're, that's part of that community engagement too, right? And so, we're. So if at all possible. So Scott's on the list, you already got your check.
We're all on the budget committee already.
Yeah, I.
We don't have anybody on the foundation.
No, but we would like one.
Yeah.
I could probably do that one.
I see.
Yeah, I could do that one.
Good.
What's your next?
I'm gonna need in December.
Okay.
Yeah, um, yeah. I haven't picked a day yet, but it was. I need to get after this.
I need. Two people, and then, yeah, right, right.
We just, that, we're not. That's the same as, as, yeah.
That's it, yeah. Then that policy review, then we just mentioned that. No, if we're gonna do the board, we just said two minutes per year, so that's, that's what that was, was the policy review, which.
That will connect to be scratched.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna do that.
Then, you know.
Yes, yeah, CSN, uh, E S D budgets.
Oh, yes, the.
Which are all pretty. But.
I'll do, yes. Let's wait this one. I'll do way more interesting capital project. You got the S T budget.
Uh, I'm already on the E S T budget.
You're good, you're wishing this here could be, you're taking off that response.
No, you're doing good. So I played here, David.
Yeah.
So, why did you say you want to go on capital project planning?
Yep.
So we have one more at the temple, brother. I can follow that up. It doesn't, I mean, we could. We can change it up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Mark and I can't get together on the same day, and then. If Mark and Dave can, it's.
But at some point, we got to, yeah.
Well, there's gonna be more, but if we have three board members there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if somebody has to be absent, so. One subcommittee. And, and then we can put. Uh, many reports.
As a.
On our agenda, and we, we might think about whether or not we want that consent, so they write it up, so, or share it, but.
On consent, yeah, probably on consent agenda.
We'd have to write it up then.
I know they would, I guess, yeah, you guys go all side.
We'll just leave it as many reports under other businesses. See how it works, you may not have much to it, so. Just, just really want like a debrief, so if you went to that meeting or something, we can just debrief it, and that's four meetings, just gonna say three points of what they talked about, if. For any need or help or information. So we're communicating. Good.
Capital project was a. We got a committee for them, is it, we've been trying to quarterly or?
Yeah, well, we'll have to make that committee, and at the next board meeting, so we'll have for new businesses to create.
Create all these committees.
That committee, yeah, it's just that committee.
Is it just that one?
Yeah, the rest is just stuff that we're in.
Oh, because just.
We have created also that, that.
Okay, so this one.
So I want to create that committee with formerly put these two guys on there as the primary people, they are substitutes. And then some of those things that we want to designate, if how many times I need, or whatever, we can accept.
It may be too much.
That. You know, no.
God, if you weren't aware.
And, and keep it, keep it open.
Then you're here for your system, so.
Right now.
Um, all right, uh, last one, board menu funding, well, that's enough. Uh, for increased activities related to implement, implementation of board goals. Policy or protocol may need to be developed in order to submit budget for future consideration to be included into district budgets.
The only thing I was thinking here is if we had more. The only thing I was thinking here is if we had more professional development, where we've been to be good at professional development stuff, we'd have to bump that budget. Now we're we're paying for some sort of. Staff projects or whatever for depreciation stuff, because we had to.
It's been, it's been a little bit thicker in the past, it just, we've shrunk it as. You guys hadn't used it, but I mean, I think ten years ago, I think I think it was. I'd have to go and look, but I think it was like five thousand, four, five thousand.
Seems like five.
Yeah.
Because honestly, if you have a member on that rural caucus. They need to go to the. Base, base one more likely, I think, maybe two of them per year, I think there's a. Fall one or or spring one or something.
Oh, yeah.
Bet they do just for that, just for that caucus, I think, so. If somebody really got involved in that, which is great, right? Um, for our school district, then that's gonna be, you gotta pay for that, you know, compensate, and you know, whether they, whether or not, but you should have it, so. And anymore.
It should at least not cost them life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's where, you know, like in this state, we go a lot of pushback, because I think we're. Two percent of the budget, which is like a lot of money, because we got a eleven million dollar budget, so that goes to just. Training. But we gotta go across the country, so we spend thousands and thousands of dollars on board training. If we have to. You know, by the end of December.
There's a lot of conferences in Florida this time. I've been noticing that.
When they have it in Portland, uh, Seattle, nobody goes, so I don't know.
I was lucky enough in November last year to go to a private level food manufacturing conference in Chicago.
No, we're, that's a good one. So I don't know if we need to go down that route.
It's like the, it looks like the rural caucus is meeting like the first Tuesday. Of every month. If you look on the OSBA. Public meetings calendar.
The first Tuesday?
The first Tuesday of every month, it's a Zoom link. They meet, it looks like they meet an hour. Six to seven. So the next meeting's November four.
It does.
So I don't know if anything has to be done in this state, if we haven't identified any funding.
The other thing we've talked about spending money on is the as an employee dinner, but not far as our significant goal. Evening.
Which we may not be able to use district money for, so that'd have to be up there.
So it has to be fundraised.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we wanted to increase that. Two thousand dollars from professional development, that would be something. Need to, that, you know, anymore too, a lot of those are eleven, so it don't cost you. As much, sometimes they're they're paid by you once, but you don't have travel and all that, so.
Oh, I might be wrong, the third executive committee meetings, I don't know if that means anything, but they're.
Sounds plausible.
That's for the officers.
And they've got leadership assembly meeting. About the second Tuesday.
All right, well, we've gone through that, we still need vision. We still need a board vision. Or they condescend on everybody's evenings.
Well, yeah, we got five, I think we're doing. Now this. Most staff appreciation. But we'd be no down.
What if, uh, we take two weeks, though, which is the next board meeting? And everybody tries to come up with a. I'd direction for the vision. The next meeting, we seem pepper, suspicious. We can pull up the documents that we had. Last year around some of that stuff and try to. Pull some pieces out of that, or. I want to leave vision, I guess that was strategic.
Is that strategic planning or is that? Evaluation step?
Oh, it was, it was a mix of both. It was, we need to have teach planning better in place, so that we could. Evaluate to whether.
Yeah. Only one product, all else, pretty good.
And I'm backing up to this, the very first one, staff decisions. Somebody's, somebody's in charge of figuring that out. The last thing we're gonna do is say. We, the board, are gonna do this, and then we drop the following.
President's gonna dig in the money. See if we got something that's, and then we'll know what we can do and how to please. If you can't, get a funding. Through whatever group, I mean, the.
But this can just. But some of this stuff can just go under like that board discussion heading. As as far as revisiting at the board meeting.
Yes.
Just revisiting. Progress.
Yeah, like a board goal update.
Yeah, board goal update, okay.
And status update, something like that.
Yes.
Yeah, that keeps us all honest and on track, because. Yeah, I'm really need help. Stay on track, everyone, yeah. Then to be thinking about what's missing there, right? So this brainstorm, just so we had somewhere to jump off and not sit here and look at each other's funny all night.
We don't have pizza budget in there for weeks yet.
And I thought about, I'm kind of a, you know, because of that. The other school district goes with, I mean.
I used. Need to stop.
Really?
Yeah.
Well.
Who told you to stop?
Previous board. I used to bring snacks.
Well, it might bring in more people too. But again, you know, I have a lot of options for food, so. Uh, but yeah, that's something.
Murphy's. I mean, Ben Olt.
Yeah. Anything else? We had. Board committees, board goals, discussion, we've done all three of those. And the fifth one is adjourned, so. So missing something, we did a pretty good productive work session for past eight o'clock, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, thanks, Ed.
Yeah. Pass us. Thank you. Want to keep this? You decide to need more notes on the agenda?
Yeah, you keep that, I'm printing out. Oh, who wants to sign yet?
Man, before you leave, I have a whole bunch of contracts.